Order our Beechwood Board of Education October thirteenth meeting, welcome everyone. Lori, would you like to?
Sure, Mrs. Berger, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mrs. Slate?
Here.
Mrs. Wood?
Here.
Okay, on to our favorite part of our meeting, our recognition of guests. And we have one, he's gonna hide back there. But I'm super excited about it, it's new. It's a superintendent award for October. And with that being said, I'll let Mr. Kaiser take the upper.
So being here for a while, I've always worn people out with my three Ps, professional, positive, progressive. So if you were in high school for as many years as I was, you've heard that a lot. Elementary, they've heard it for a good three or four months now. But those are kind of the, I guess, my core values of how I try to operate in any type of role that I've had here, being professional, being positive, being progressive. I thought it fitting to create a monthly award around a staff member, whether it be classified or certified staff member that could demonstrate that that particular month. And so I put it out there a few weeks ago and had over ten or eleven nominations of fellow staff members, by staff members to nominate. And through, looking through those, I read a nomination that said, "That's walking around the Beechwood Covington Catholic game, I was taking I was taking extra notice of our facilities and the appearance of everything. Though we didn't pull out the W, I know those kernels were impressed by fifty-four Beechwood Road. The man behind all of this is Jay Hubbard. I came up this weekend to grab my laptop, I forgot to do work this weekend, and there he was picking up and straightening up the front yard as usual. Being that my classroom is in the front of the school, I've seen the sprinklers and Jay working overtime the past few weeks during this drought. Jay does all of this extra work with a smile on his face and offers a way that he endures these duties during this never-ending summer heat. He wears many hats, and I know he does more than any of us even know. Because of Jay, Beechwood's facilities leave visitors and all of the beautiful campus. Jay is Beechwood, and we are sure blessed to have him." So, reading that and then watching Jay, not just this year, but every year since he's been hired, it's just, he's the glue of what keeps this place on the outside looking like, like it should. It has, this board over the past ten years has invested in the facilities more than I can remember when I was here. And so this place looks awesome, and it's not just because of the decisions in the maze, because Jay keeps this place looking nice. And he doesn't do it by the hours he's assigned either. He's here more than he should be. And it's in opportune times where we need him here, but he doesn't have to be. And so whether it be weekends or nights or any time of the day, he's here, he's working, and he's always thinking ahead. So, much appreciated. I know we gave you a certificate for, I guess, positivity, always looking to lend a helping hand. You have this, you have the certificate, we had an award for you, it's being made by the IDIOLab students. So it's a cool trophy that you'll receive, or little glass award that you'll receive when they're done making it. But just wanted to recognize you. I guess I can give you the certificate again, we'll get a picture.
Even when I mentioned two thousand tulips.
You stand on the other side.
Have any public comment? Okay, we'll go on to our discussion and action agenda. Item A, a motion to approve the hiring of the Adams Law Firm as school board attorney. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Discussion, you want to add anything else, or?
No, it's just a great interview process, from the request for proposals to the selection of the candidates for interview, down to the interviews themselves. Everything ran very smoothly, thanks to the board for coordinating and putting all that together. I'd like to introduce our new firm, but the kind of the specific person we'll be working with is Erin Meehan from Adams Law. I'll throw it over to Erin to say a few words about.
Sure. First and foremost, thanks for having me, and also thank you for extending the contract to my law for Adams Law. I have been practicing education law for over a decade, I've represented a lot of different school districts, but I'm very excited to be a part of the Beechwood School District. First and foremost, I was born and raised in Fort Wright, Kentucky. I live in Cresty Hills, Kentucky, and I go to Blessed Sacrament Church. So I'm very grateful and thankful for the opportunity. I know that my firm can provide a lot of expertise, and the work of this board and the work of the district employees has taken this community to such great places, and I know that our support will help them even further their goals. So, thank you again, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready?
Yep.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes, Mrs. Wood.
Yes. And motion carries on to our consent agenda, take a motion to approve as written. And make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Anything you want to point out or add for?
Just going down, just joint session, September fifteenth, that was a great experience with both SPDMs. You know, we haven't met since then, so just having both SPDMs at the board to be able to do some work around your three, the three-year strategic plan, the five pillars, to do some learning, some collaborative work together, was a good experience. We have our next one that will come up in January, so just appreciative of all the people spending the time that evening, being able to work through the strategic plan, what the goals are, how we're gonna work towards those goals with some actionable items. So that was a great experience. Again, our next one will be in January. If you look at superintendent reimbursement, just clear on that, I have to go like Frankfurt, and I have to go to Lexington, and I have to go to these trainings, it's required by the state, so I drive a lot back and forth. So if you see those reimbursements on there, that is because of all the times they require me to go down there to do that professional learning, which is great, it's just a lot being out of the building. I'd rather be here, but it is some really good learning with other new superintendents in the state. Field trips are as normal. The technology activity report, that's something we submit in order to get our CATS funding. And so that's been submitted, and so we'll get that CATS funding, we'll have a report on that CATS funding in November.
Yeah, there'll be, there's an offer out there, I just got it today, so we'll prove that next week, or next month.
Next month. Change orders, the change orders, you can see there, the Atlas change order was for the countertop in the collaboration space up on the second floor. The Conley painting was all the painting, the touch-ups from when they opened in January to over the summer, they went around and touched a lot of things up that they had painted earlier that needed touch-up. And then the OKI interiors was all the fire code. So when the inspector went downstairs near the dressing rooms, they said you need to drywall this and put up some fire, have a fireproofing, so OKI interiors went down and did that work. So those are those four change orders for that.
Is that stairwell open now to, down there?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. We're waiting for, you can see there's part I is certificates of substantial completion. There's a list of those contractors who have completed their work.
Yeah.
There's still three or so that still need to complete their work. Once they get that, then we have the inspector come in and sign off on that area, that final area, and then we're full occupancy.
Okay.
So that's the consent agenda.
All right. And you going to have any questions about consent agenda? Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood? Yes.
Okay, on to superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. I like, I'm sometimes worried.
Don't worry, you'll be getting a lot.
First thing I want to do is, and I know every month we're gonna try to incorporate some sort of program that goes on here, so not just internally, but externally is aware of the great things that are going on here, and the people that do the great work here are recognized. And so I will turn it over to Stephanie Layton and Janelle Halls to talk about, not just our internship program, but all that comes with internship.
No, we're good, no good. Yeah, thanks for giving us an opportunity to talk about this, we love what we do. And hopefully you've gotten a chance to look at some of the amazing photos of our current seniors. Oops, jumped ahead. So we'll start with kind of why internship. And we share these goals actually with, with our students, as well as parents that come to a pre-internship meeting. And I'm gonna let Janelle talk about this, because these are some of the things that she's been super passionate about through the process.
We've just kind of expanded since internship started when it was like pre-us, like four or five years ago. It was really just about career exploration. And so as we went through things, we really found that students need employable skills and networking, and so those things are just as important, if not more important, than, than their career exploration. Yeah.
Okay, and then I want to make sure, so the employable skills, network connections as well, as building that edge program, or it's edge is kind of a way of life for us here, from kindergarten all the way to capstone. So with the capstone, it can be the internship, it can be a dual credit, it can be, you know, AP research, it can be a lot of different things to build that senior year, but they're starting in kindergarten to build those skills.
Which we really see that with their employable skills, because they have, they're gaining so many, so many skills throughout all the years before twelfth grade.
Exactly. So by the time they get to our standard high school years, ninth and tenth grades, we're doing things with them like U-science, which is an aptitude assessment, not just interest, they're looking at their aptitudes, working on presentation skills, that goes on, again, kindergarten all the way up. The It's Your Reality program, it used to be called Reality Store, but that's something where students are really getting an idea of what life costs. If they're gonna take on this career, what is, you know, what does it cost to have a home? What does it cost to have a car? All of those things. They also start working on their resume drafts. We may not, we know it's maybe just bullet points at this point, but let's get a start on that. By eleventh grade, they're doing mock interviews, they're prepping for internship, they're prepping for jobs. We're having pre-internship meetings with every student who is even thinking they might want to do internship, and refining that resume, so that by twelfth grade, they have those options that I just talked about.
And with the mock interviews, we're bringing people in from the outside. So it's not, they're doing it with peers, or with the teachers that they're comfortable with. These are business partners and community people that are coming in and doing these interviews with the students.
Yes, we've got defensive learning coming up in a month from now, so you'll all get an invitation also to, to be judges for that if you are able. So, did, you were talking about the numbers for us, like how we progressed?
Okay, so twenty twenty-one school year, that was the first year when I had taken, when I was coordinating it. Students were already placed at that point. So after that year, Michelle Klein and I took it to the juniors and said, because we're like, why isn't everybody doing this? So we took it to the juniors and told them about it, and said we would help them find internships, and so that's when we went to sixty-five. So we have continually grown, like the classic twenty-three, twenty-four, there were sixty-five there, but there were only a hundred and five students that year, when in like in twenty, classic twenty-two, there were closer to a hundred and twenty. So our percentages, last year we had a hundred and ten interns, I think our, the class was about a hundred and forty-five. And then this year, I think we're closer to like a hundred and fifteen or twenty students, and we're at ninety, at ninety-four interns. And then, again, we have like, we have seventy-one partners currently, and things change every year, we have, there's a hundred and fifty companies we have in our database that we work with, but students change their interests, things like that. So every year we're looking for new partners. So this year alone, we have twenty-six new companies that have joined us just for this school year so far.
What's been great too, is a lot of these partners are coming to us, or we're having students take a little bit more ownership in it, and they're finding, they're looking, starting their junior year, starting to look for some of their own internships, and they have brought us some of our new partners this year, which is amazing. So internship logistics, you can jump into, five to ten hours per week, depending on the internship that they're doing. Our firefighter interns and our St. Elizabeth interns are doing ten hours a week. They do earn internship credit for that, so that they are not paid at their internship. They do track time, and the mentor approves that, I'll show you that in a, on the next slide. And Janelle also assigns journal assignments for them. In fact, some of these great photos that you see are part of a journal assignment.
We try to make that like, when like, we're doing LinkedIn with them, make sure everybody has a robust LinkedIn page.
Yes.
Make them really kind of try to think about some things when they're going into their internship. It's not just like a journal of, what did you do today?
Yes.
Really kind of thinking about those experiences, you know, making connections, networking as part of that as well.
I have a question about the hours. How are most kids structuring that a day? Most of them doing a couple hours every afternoon, or some doing bigger chunks a couple days a week? Just curious how they're fitting that in.
It's such a personalized experience, so we do have a little bit of all of those things. Most of them have afternoon hours, and so they have to get those five hours in, so they might go two or three times a week to get those hours in. But we can, we have some flexibility. Our principals and assistant principals have been great working with us on making some modifications to make sure the kids get the best experience.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, no one does, rarely does anyone do it like an hour a day. Usually like two and a half hours, maybe like twice a week.
And probably even rarer, a six-hour day, right? Because they've got other classes in their schedule type thing?
It's rare, and sometimes it happens, but it's rare.
Sometimes it does happen where kids go once.
I didn't know if there's ever anything particularly cool in their focus of that company going on that day, if we're good about letting them out that day.
We are, yeah. And we, this year, we just had a conversation with a student today. We reached out to teachers, the student today said, they had an opportunity, and I said, email all your teachers, copy me on it, let them know what you're doing. If, if you're able to miss, then they give that okay, then we'll do that. Because we definitely want them to be able, yes.
Yes.
We want them, and again, like Stephanie said, since, since we did this and started doing it differently in twenty twenty-one, the administration has been so supportive to be flexible about what happens.
Yeah, we have a HVAC intern, for instance, this year doing a longer time, because that, a lot of times the trades will ask for that. So students do have an option to intern one semester too, and then do something else the next semester, do a dual credit. So we're trying to make this, again, a little bit more personalized for each student's learning. I want to show you, I just mentioned that the interns complete a time tracker, and then, and the mentor approves that, I just wanted to give you kind of an example of what we've built. So this is one student, and she has filled out, you know, within her, within her each day that she has worked, that is in military time, by the way, it kind of converts to that. So each time the student is in there, they can mark their times, and then this goes to an approval page, which the mentor has access to, so he or she can go in and approve those hours to confirm that they were, they were there at the time. So that helps us keep track of, again, the internship time. We know they're doing great things there, but we do want them to have some accountability as well that they've, that they are there. So based on that, we did something fun this year, right Sarah? We like fun spreadsheets. I wanted to kind of get us, get us kind of tracking not just each student, but I'm just gonna scroll down, sorry for the whiplash there. But this is the amount of hours of, that our interns have, have logged. We have some kids that maybe haven't logged all of their hours yet, but we, our interns this semester so far have been out three thousand hours into the community.
That's just to date?
That's just to date, this semester, this semester. So I built this because sometimes we do have some students who will come back to us after they've graduated, especially in a healthcare setting, and they say, hey, I, how many hours did I work for that? Because that might count. So that this will, we will be able to have, I'm sorry again for the whiplash, keep track of both first semester, second semester, and those total hours that those, each student has accumulated. So, then...
So yeah, just our communication piece, so we do have an internship Google Classroom. We post a weekly kind of update, just think about what's going on, here's what you need to think about for the week. And then, so obviously we use that as communication, we have some of our assignments within there. Email, we're also a big part of the email pieces, we are trying to teach them that they must check their email, and they must answer email, and they must answer it in a professional manner. So we do a lot of emailing, and then, and then the support you as well. Sometimes the support you might say, check your email. To a student, so.
So, and this just lets you know, I'm not gonna go dig into this, but we do have an internship handbook that you all voted on, or approved. But every year we kind of make sure that everything is up to date on, that's the, the school district signs it, we sign it, the student signs it, the parent signs it, and the internship mentor signs it too. So that everybody's on the same page, that link is there if any of you would like to see that. And then, looking ahead, so again, we like to reflect and grow from our end too, and every single year we look for improvements, and every single year we've made improvements. Some of that comes from the end-of-year surveys that we give both our students and our mentors. Of course, we appreciate feedback also from the teachers, whose classes might be impacted by a student leaving during, for an experience or something like that, we love that feedback. One big thing we're working on this year is internship timeline. We're like cranking toward the end of the summer, trying to get everybody placed. We want to make sure that's, you know, a little bit more structured, so that there's some peace of mind for all involved. And then again, communication, that is, that is a focus area of the entire district. And so we want to continue to do that and find improvements for students and every, all the stakeholders within internship. So, any other questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you, I mean, I've watched this program grow, so it's been, I mean, I've had three interns, I think, and they, and every year I see, you know, like the program growing, and, you know, just even from logging in, I remember the paper that they would write me. And allowing the flexibility, because, you know, in my business, like evenings, weekends, and they were all willing to go and do it, and so it's been a pleasure to watch it grow, and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
That's great.
Not to reiterate what Jeanie said, but I can't thank you both enough. It's grown exponentially. Again, I've had three growth through the internship progress, the process, and all three of them learned. One, I thought he was crazy when he told me what he wanted to do for his internship, and now he's, you know, about to graduate from college. Loved it. So, and it's because of that internship program, he was, he was kind of dabbling in the interest, and now it's an extreme passion, so.
That's awesome.
It's an amazing program.
And that's the stuff that keeps us like, just plugging away, because those stories are amazing.
Well, and you've allowed one of mine to do two different types of internships, because they weren't, he wasn't sure what he wanted to do, and it helped him secure One Direction. So those are just personal stories, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the strengths of your guys, it's, it's not just an, it's a program. And it's not just placing kids in a place they want to go, get out of school for a few hours each, it's not. It's, it's all the stuff that surrounds the actual going to a place. It's all the prep work to create a more prepared employee. It's the alignment to potentially what they It's the alignment to potentially what they may have minored in, in high school. It's an opportunity for them to experience something, as you said, where they could have potential career or a place in college. It's personalized, teach kid. Those things are the hard things about this. It's why it's a two-person team, but multiple people from, from the high school as well. It, it's a, it's a group effort, and you guys are leading that. And it's just beyond what you think of a traditional internship. And you guys have made it that way because you're constantly thinking, how can we get it better? And so I thank you for that.
You have the partnerships too, that you all have, you know, that has been wonderful. Because it does take some time on those partners to, you know, teach these kids. And it takes, it takes some time. I mean, I can personally say that, you know, you do set aside, you don't just continue your workday. You really, because you want them to bring them in to like, really get to learn. So, and it takes time. So I know that the partners appreciate the work that you do too.
They are very extraordinarily valuable in what they bring to the table.
Yes, I agree. It's been good on my end too. So that's, you know, I get to learn what they're learning about. And I get to still feel like I'm, you know, connected to the high school at, at somewhat. Because, you know, they come in and they'll tell me all about their day, and that's.
You could probably, you've probably gotten to see Jeannie doing it over the years, how the kids are more prepared due to the, our edge program, how the kids are more and more, you know, their employable skills, communication, all the things.
And what they're doing, and yes.
Because of what's going on in all of those grades.
Yes, I agree. I think it's really enhanced over the, yes, I agree.
So that's anecdotal data? That's real data? Does, it's from an accountability standpoint? That's not a test score? You know, there's real people out there saying, yes, you have, what you guys are doing is, is great work. I think the state is starting to recognize that from that local accountability model. Us having that, having that prepared to share with the community is going to do, it's going to set us kind of ahead of the game when, when that comes down the pipe from KDE. So we've been doing it for a while now, and you guys have made it that way.
How, how often do we have a student that, you know, thinks they're interested in the area, and then they, they get there and find out they hate it? And they don't, you know, they, they think they want to go into nursing, and then they see blood for the first time. They're like, this is not for me. How often does that happen? And when it does, do we encourage them and try to coach them to stick it out? Or do we pivot and try to place them somewhere else?
Feel free to jump in. We, we want them to finish the semester. Just like a sports team.
Sure.
Finish the season.
Finish what you started.
You start, you don't quit, right?
But we absolutely work with them. We also have started really putting some of that emphasis on, okay, let's sit down together and look at what could be another option for you. Let's look at, you know, the current list of partners. Let's see what we can do. But that, we always want them to be able to explore, to Amy's point. You know, there, we may be looking at two different options where they're like, oh, my gosh, that's it. And I will say forever, the one that didn't work, that's still a win.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's eliminated now, not thirty thousand dollars.
I think we should celebrate, I think we should celebrate that. So my son's in an internship now? He was undecided between engineering and finance. He's doing engineering, doesn't want to do engineering. And that was, right? He's like, this is pretty boring. I'm like, yeah, okay, now you know. I'm glad you didn't spend four years and a hundred thousand dollars. Great, like. Learning that.
So yes, we've said that from the get-go. It's, it's a huge win. And I think it's also great for the students that realize they're not doing something that they love, that they stick it out for the semester. We've had some really great stories of students who learned some, like, really great employable skills when the mentor was even kind of like, I don't know what to do with this. And then a month later, they're like, wow, they're not doing what we thought they were going to do, but they've learned so much. So I think, you know, having them stick it out that semester, and what a relationship they could build with a mentor that they, the student, it's not their passion, but they still do a great job. And that person, they build that relationship with that, with their mentor. Their mentor knows a lot of other people in a lot of other industries.
That's the thing I was, I was going to say. So kudos on the like LinkedIn, the email. I got a LinkedIn request from my son a couple weeks ago, and I was like, yeah, that's a nice thing in my life. But yeah, I mean, those things are just invaluable, and they're table stakes, but I don't know that they're flawed everywhere, so.
As one final note, the seniors are working on their defensive learning. I got to meet with your son today on his. And it's cool for them, for me, to see where they're putting their, their internship experiences on their defensive learning, and talking about what they've learned from it, and talking about what, what they want to do next, or how they, how it impacted them. So it's great.
That's great. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
I mean, I said this last time, this is, I'm going to sound like a.
Russell and Ray.
Yeah, Russell and Ray, thank you. Because it's only, this is through September, so it's only like a month ahead of the real need of what's happening here. So we're still early in, so we're kind of pacing as we expected. Nothing really, nothing really major. I think it'll, it's some things that have kind of popped maybe compared to the last year. It'll all even out within the next month or two again, because it's just a matter of timing of some things that happen. So I feel like it just, it's going according to plan right now. So, I mean, I don't even know what I would highlight, honestly.
Our, our SEEK base increased from the state. Increased by two hundred and sixty dollars per child. So from last year to this year, the base of SEEK funding we get per kid went up by two sixty. But the interesting thing about Beechwood, it's not two sixty for us, it's one seventy-seven.
Yeah, we only get like sixty percent.
So it's an increase in funding per kid, and it's, and we've also seen an increase in enrollment.
Yeah, enrollment, which is driving, is going to drive it up a little.
Which will increase a little bit of revenue for us. So just know that we'll see some, some increase in revenue there.
But I want to do, I mentioned like, this increase in SEEK that happened is like one of the first significant SECS in, or increases in SEEK since, I looked at this recently, but it, like, before COVID. Before COVID, it was very flat, you know, and then this was one of the biggest ones they've done in years. So keep that in mind. You're not going to find the money in SEEK necessarily.
Can you help me understand one hundred and seventy whatever dollars per student? What is that total number per student? Like, I, I want to know how big of a jump is the one seventy-five?
So what did I look at this morning? So it's like thirty-nine hundred, where forty-five eighty-six, I think is what it was, if I remember right? I have to look it up. I, you know, I need to bring that with me. But I know it's sixty-eight percent.
One thousand six hundred roughly?
Well, I was, I was curious about. Four hundred and sixty-one is what that is, the number series.
I was curious what it was per student. So then how big of a jump is the one seventy-five per student? Is that like a ten percent increase?
Oh, that was about, it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars year-over-year, is what I kind of recall, from the budgeting when I did that. But I'd have to actually look at that again. Yes, it's about two hundred and fifty. But the student head counts, the one thing I didn't have built into the budget. We had about, I think, twenty more students, or like ADA. They base it on average daily attendance. It was twenty, it was twenty, but ended up being twenty more than what I predicted, projected. So that's going to give us a bump too. So it'll be a little more than two hundred and fifty year-over-year. It is.
In superintendent's report, I talked about the joint session, Phase C construction. The, the pre-bid meeting will be on Wednesday and Thursday. So pre-bid, where all the contractors will show up and get more information about what's, what's going to be asked for. That's on the sixteenth of October. Then on the twenty-eighth, they'll have it from the sixteenth to the twenty-eighth to submit their bids. And then the bids will be open on the twenty-eighth in here. That's where Codell and Joe Hayes will be here. Then on the twenty-eighth through, between the twentieth and the second of November, Codell will review all those as our construction manager, and they will put together a recommendation to the board. And then on the third, we'll have a special meeting in here, the board, to accept whatever recommendation or whatever bids we really want to accept.
Does everyone have that on their calendar?
Monday, November third.
At six P M?
I mean, the earlier the better.
We can do it when, I mean.
We had talked about if we do the acceptance of the bid that day, on the third, a little earlier, then we could get outside and maybe do like the groundbreaking.
Four.
Yeah, then at four o'clock, yeah.
Then we had the groundbreaking at four thirty.
If we could do that, yeah. Good, Codell.
So at four? Can everyone do four?
Yep.
Four on the third, four, four thirty?
The time has changed by then, though, you know that? It changes a lot because maybe they don't get out there early enough.
So that's Phase C. And then once we accept that bid, and that gets approved on the third, then they can start on the fourth, which they won't start officially on the fourth, but hopefully within the next week or two after that, that's when they get, they actually start to get to work. And then they'll start their work on the upper fields, softball, baseball press boxes. And that'll be the November through December, and then in December, that's when they'll begin the.
So you think they'll be on premise five, like in November?
Hopefully in November. That's what we're asking for, in November to get over there. And start to get those press boxes, start taking them down, start demoing as soon as possible. And they won't do any work until early, early December on the football side of the track and all that, like this side. Because of the season not being over, hopefully.
And any update on the lawn, front lawn, as far as like sprinklers and.
Yeah. Right now, sprinkler system's going in. Yeah, you can see the tractor out there. So that, that sprinkler system will go in. After the sprinkler system is in, or while the sprinkler system's in, the largest trees that I've found are, they're between three and a half and four inches base. They're about twenty feet, eighteen to twenty feet tall, red oats to, to plant. They said that the bigger you get them, the more volatile they become, reversed in movement. And so I've reached out as far as Dayton, Ohio, to try to find trees that were larger, and have not been able to find. They've always, everyone's redirected me back to Anlins Farm, which is down at River Road. That's where I drove down and took pictures and showed you the four. Four uniform red oats, they look great comparatively speaking, relatively speaking to what we had. They won't look substantial. But they will be there. The lighting will be there. So we do the sprinkler system.
Landscaping around the.
Sprinkler system, then trees, then after trees, landscaping, then after landscaping, seeding. And then everything should be in place with the lighting as well.
Are they going to do the lighting before they do the seeding, or?
I will. I think I recommend a lighting to not disrupt probably till spring. Because they're not going to have leaves on them.
I know, but will they, I'm talking about the, like, the lawn itself. Will they have to go underground anyway? So should that be done before, or no?
I think the lighting is already there. Those four bases are there.
They're still there.
So I don't know if they need to dig anything. I think they just need to.
And in front of the tiger and stuff?
I don't know if there is lighting still in front of the tiger. We once had that. But I can, I can ask, with the CTO in here or Delta to take it up and see. So it's the, the front lawn. Good feedback from the trees. I mean, people understood the, the safety component to that. So it was, people were sad, but they understood. That would be my, that would be my summary of the trees. New teacher update. We just met as a district with the new teachers. The counselors have met with the new teachers. The admin has met with the new teachers. They have a mentor. Just like, there's a year-long plan, or limits to that plan, ending in the first quarter. Those new teachers that are, seem to adapt and assimilate very quickly. Great feedback so far from them. We just met with them about two weeks ago. So that continues on throughout the course of the year. We have a whole plan that's calendar-based. Innovation teams have started. So we have the five innovation teams. The AI innovation team, that's in the personalized learning pillar. The wellness team, innovation team, that's within the wellness pillar. The communications team, which is in the community engagement pillar. The exceptional populations team, which is in the personalized learning pillar. And then the leadership team, which is in the leadership pillar. So each one of those pillars has its own innovation team that's going to guide improvement work within each one of those parts of the strategic plan. That was embedded in the strategic plan, so it's actionable items that are occurring as a result. So those have started. Site visits. Two weeks ago, we had Dr. Poe here, who is the Northern Kentucky Education Council. He brought, I think, six or so superintendent-level administrators from Pennsylvania. And they did a site visit on experiential vibrant learning, what the edge program was and what it's all about here at Beechwood. We have Dr. Robbie Fletcher here on this Friday. He's the commissioner at the Kentucky Department of Education. He's doing, he's, he's trying to learn more about what the state's doing in regards to his, not just his initiative, but KDE's initiative in the past several years on vibrant learning. So he wanted to see what the edge program was all about, so that he, he could share that with the rest of the state. He said he's heard good things. He wants to come see it in person. So he'll be here all day on Friday. My mentor, Matt Baker, the superintendent of Old and Verona, will also be here that day. He wanted to come look at it as well, along with Tim Hanner, former superintendent of Kent County Schools, and now he's the former president of Educate NKY. He will be here as well. So have a good time with people. Then we'll learn more about the edge. They'll do some tours.
Since this Friday?
It's this Friday. SAT is official. So it's, it's official. We will give the SAT, I believe, on March tenth. With those juniors who have to take the SAT, we're also going to offer and pay for the ACT for all of them as well. They're preparing, been preparing their whole lives for ACT. We're not going to say, sorry, you're going to take the SAT. We're going to give them both. Students who take the SAT and say, I like that, I want to go take the ACT, that'll be offered to them. We're going to do test prep in, in both of those areas as well. So we will, we will offer test prep for SAT and test prep for ACT. They will be two weeks apart, and we'll allow students to decide if they want to take the ACT again, or take the ACT after the SAT.
What's the reason that the state gave us to switching to SAT?
They said it was a two-committee team. One committee reviewed the financial component, and the other committee reviewed the academic component, the test component. And they said both committees, after getting together, after that review, were both on board with SAT. I wasn't part of that.
I was going to say, he was on their committee. Like, did they have, was that a teacher or a college student?
Don't know. Regardless of what they decided, my, my only request was, I wish they would have rolled that out over the course of maybe two years or three years to say, prepare for this. Get your freshmen to prepare and be ready to take this when they are juniors. Not, hey, you're juniors this year, take this. So that's why we've talked with, with high school administration on making sure that students feel comfortable taking the test that they want to take. And we'll prepare them for, for both. But if they want to lean into one, they can lean into one. If they want to lean into both of them, they can. And so that's, that's our philosophy, to make sure they feel comfortable and not stressed or overwhelmed.
Because that is kind of stressful, like, all of a sudden, okay, guess what? We're switching to SAT. I mean, for every district, I'm sure it's the same. I agree.
The next two-by-two will be October twenty-third, Brad and Amy, for the two-by-two to come next, over Thursday. Superintendent Town Hall on October twenty-eighth, and that's where we'll go over. We'll do kind of like a rounding thing, like what we did with the SBDM Board Joint Session, where it's a learning experience around the three-year strategic plan and the five pillars. So those people that show up, that will learn a little bit more about what the goals are and what our actions are towards those goals, so they understand what's going on in regards to school improvement.
Why are we advertising for that?
For the.
For the superintendent.
So we didn't want to do it too early, where it becomes white noise. It will be starting next week, a week ahead of time. We'll do social media. We'll do part of newsletters. It'll be, part of everything we send out will be, hey, as a reminder, Superintendent Town Hall on October twenty-eighth, six P M. That'll be in here.
I've been trying to encourage community members to, to.
Love them. That's it. We've got, first quarter ends Friday. Soccer tonight. Boys are at Highlands at seven, girls are at Dixie at six.
They're down two to nothing.
Girls are Dixie. And then, we have volleyball districts next week here.
Correct. Tuesday and Thursday.
Thursday senior night, I think, right? This week for volleyball.
For volleyball. And then just an FYI, not Halloween is a Friday. Thursday Night Football, Campbell County, home game, Thursday night, October thirtieth, instead of that Friday of Halloween.
Senior night also.
On the thirtieth?
Several things are senior night that night, I think.
Yeah, football, marching band, and church.
Marching band will be at State on the twenty-fifth. That's at Western Kentucky University.
Lot going on.
Lot going on. It's fall.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Everyone need to make a motion for, to make the agenda part of the official board minutes?
I'll make a motion. I have a second. Mrs. Berger. Mr. Burns, Mrs. Slate, Mrs. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Brad's not here to make it.